Meeting of the Planning Commission will come to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the regular minutes, pardon me, of the June 3rd meeting. May I have a motion?
I make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved as presented. Second item on the agenda is application CU-08-6 filed by Christopher Hernandez requesting approval of a conditional use permit to establish and operate a private tutoring school in an R single-family residential district. The subject property is legally described as the west 60 feet of the west 120 feet of the south 100 feet of Lot 10 in surveyors plat number eight in the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, plus one-half of the vacated Michigan Avenue which joins said property on the west and is addressed as 1503 Stapler Avenue. May we have a staff report?
Mr. Hurs will be presenting this report.
This conditional use permit application is similar to a lot of the applications that we see when we move from a licensed daycare to a group daycare home in the fact that we're bringing in an external unrelated assistant that doesn't reside in the dwelling unit and therefore we're going to need to provide an extra parking space and take those factors into consideration. Some of the background information on this property is it, the residence resides on a lot that's 77 and a half feet wide by 100 feet deep for a total square footage of approximately 7,750 square feet. It is zoned R single-family dwelling and the comprehensive plan does show low-density residential as the proposed use for this area. The surrounding zoning and land use to the north, we have C3 business and professional offices that land use and zoning designation also resides on the west of the property. To the east, we have R single-family dwelling and that's the only adjacent property that has the same zoning classification and land use as the subject property. And to the south, we have a PDD for USD 305 and their district offices. So a lot of the surrounding area is primarily business and professional offices. The applicant has been tutoring mass science and a few other subject areas in the Salina community since the spring of 2000. He started as a tutor for K-State University in Salina here and after a while started taking on several clients that were high school students from both south and central. After time in developing relationships with local teachers and staff, the business grew and CMH Tutoring opened its doors in January of 2007. He currently works with an average of 25 to 30 students per week and presently with 45 hours of availability in the summer and 38 high school hours available for the fall. And he only has three or four spots remaining in either of the seasons. The descriptions of his tutoring services and activities, what happens is either the students or the parents contact him looking for an opening and he finds a time in which he has an opening and they have an opening and they try to get together either one or three times a week depending on what their needs and wants are as far as tutoring services. The length of the relationship that he may have with the students depends on what the students are looking for as far as their interest and their skill levels and what they're planning on doing as far as careers. The age of the students varies as well. He does have a lot of high school students, but he also has a few middle school and college students as well. And recently he has started over the summer an enrichment series for elementary students and that was brought about by a demand from fellow parents within the community looking for supplemental material for their children in the summer. His tutoring occurs seven days a week except for the summertime, mid-May through August, when the kids are out of school. During those time periods, it's a five-day-a-week, Monday through Friday situation and he takes the weekends off. And those hours are 8:00 AM usually with the conclusion of 8:30 PM. The nature of the request for the applicant is he's been operating under home occupation certificate he received late in December of 2006 and his demand has exceeded and his clientele has exceeded his capacity to provide services to his clients and he's looking to add an assistant to his business to help with the workload and tutoring his clients. The Salina and Saline County Health Department has interviewed the applicant and determined that he is exempt from any state licensing or inspections. So as we currently stand, he has to comply with building codes, fire codes, and then us as planning and that's one of the reasons we're here today to look at the impacts that the expansion of the business would have when we bring in an unrelated assistant that doesn't reside or live within the dwelling unit. When we look at the compliance with the zoning ordinance and the requirements, the R zoning district which the subject property is located in is required to have an 8,500 square foot per family minimum lot size. However, being that this building, his residence, was constructed in 1959 prior to the ordinance that we currently have that was adopted in 1977, the property is actually grandfathered in and it still exceeds most of the minimum requirements. It exceeds the max or the minimum width by seven and a half feet with a 77 and a half foot width and matches the overall depth of 100 feet that's required as a minimum lot depth. The front yard setback when the building was constructed in 1959 was 25 feet and the current residence has a 27-foot setback. The side yard setbacks at the time were the same as they are now with a seven and a half foot setback and both the east and west sides exceed that seven and a half feet by quite a drastic margin. The only exception that we have in addition to not meeting the minimum lot size is we don't meet the minimum lot rear yard setback. The rear yard setback is 14 feet and is required to be 25, but considering this is a pre-existing structure, we have non-conforming grandfather setbacks in lot sizes. When we look at the welfare to the public, the health department does not need to inspect the property or license it as we said. The fire department, building services, and planning have all inspected the property. The fire department and the building services have found the property to have proper egress, so there should be no problems there. Staff believes that permitting this expansion of the tutoring business in the proposed location would contribute to the welfare of the community by adding additional tutoring services that the community may need. The injury to the surrounding property, the site as we mentioned earlier is bordered primarily by businesses and the school district to the south. Those businesses are office and professional offices. So the use that's being proposed by the applicant isn't a whole lot different. It's not primarily residential neighborhood. At this section of the block, as we move further to the east, we become more residential, but where this property is located, staff doesn't feel that there's any injury that would be provided to the surrounding properties. The domination of the neighborhood, again, we're dealing with businesses of professional and office. The only property that's adjacent that doesn't have a business or office applied to it would be the property directly to the east and the owner of that property has called the planning department in support of the tutoring business stating that she feels anytime students or people want to try and improve their education and better their lives that that would be a good thing. And she hasn't had any problems with the existing tutoring business that has taken place for the last few years. One of the big issues that we deal with when we look at conditional uses when we're bringing in assistants that are non-relatives on the site is we have to look at the parking situation. Currently, the property does have a garage, single-car garage, and a single driveway, but the driveway is currently 12 feet wide, so it's a little wider than most single driveways and has a depth of 27 feet, so we have a pretty deep driveway. That driveway situation currently allows for the applicant to park his vehicle in the garage and have one space in the driveway. What the applicant is proposing to do to meet the demands of, and their requirements of adding the assistant would be to expand his driveway width from the current 12-foot width to a total of 30 feet wide by adding an additional, excuse me, 28 feet wide by adding that 10-foot there, or 16 feet. By doing that, he will be able to have three parking spaces in the driveway and one in the garage. What he is proposing to do is park his vehicle in the garage still, have an assistant in the driveway, and then have two spaces for loading and unloading or the parking of older students whether they are in high school and they drive themselves or if they're in college and they drive themselves. As stated, the applicant does provide services to a variety of ages and some of them do require assistance as far as having parents or guardians to drive them to the site and drop them off. Some do drive themselves. If they get there early before their appointment, what they do is there's a waiting room in the front in the living area and they are instructed to sit on the couch and wait until the applicant is done with his current students, in which case those students would exit and either wait on the couch for their ride or they would just leave in their vehicle. The board would have a few alternatives. If the required findings of facts can be made, the commission may approve the request of the conditional use permit. If they feel more information is needed or they're not in support of the conditional use, then an alternative decision could be made in the best interest of the public. Some of the staff's recommendations would be that no certificate of occupancy be issued for the tutoring center until the site has had a final inspection for compliance with life safety code and building code requirements and that no more than one additional outside tutor shall be permitted to assist with tutoring at any session and that no more than two students be tutored at any one time. So even though the applicant could theoretically have more than one assistant, maybe having a high school or college kid help out with some elementary tutoring and then having an older individual with more educational experience help with some more of the sophisticated material, that no more than one assistant be on the site at one time tutoring no more than two children.
And why are you limiting it to two in your minds? Is that your recommendation? I noticed it was in the application.
Right. Limiting the tutoring to two?
Yeah.
Well, because the tutoring takes place on a one-on-one basis and we feel that having more than one assistant on the site could push the limits of the residential character of the property.
Well, I noticed you mentioned an enrichment program. I mean, most of what happened in schools, they have some group learning. I didn't know if there were some thoughts of, you know, well, okay, we're doing calculus and three of them are having trouble, maybe we deal with three students and one tutor. Would that be a problem from staff's point of view?
I think it would simply from a home occupation standpoint. I don't know that from a philosophical standpoint of having three students, I don't think there's an issue, but the fact is that this is still a residential property in a residential neighborhood even though it is surrounded by professional and business office and we want to try and keep it as residential in character as we can while still meeting the needs of the applicant.
I know, but we've just approved up to 10 kids and other kinds of things. I would think this would be a little more controlled type setting. That's why I was having trouble understanding the limitation factor in this type of work.
Yeah, and I think the applicant can address this, but I think all of these are one-hour sessions and maybe if it was a longer period of time, maybe it wouldn't be as big of an issue, but if you have three people coming and going every hour on the hour, that could be, you know, that could increase traffic congestion by a significant amount.
I think we'd want to hear from the applicant also whether that is too limiting. It's not meant to have only two there. You may have two waiting while two are being tutored. It's not to limit it in that fashion.
And something I failed to mention, it's written in the report, but I haven't presented here in the presentation portion, is the applicant is also looking to stagger his times of arrival and his appointments so that he doesn't have two kids coming and two kids going, so basically a transition of four people taking place at a time so that he would only have one person coming and one person going at a time and that way they can be staggered by half-hour intervals and minimize the congestion on the site in that fashion.
Yes, I would note that if you compare it to our allowance that you can do music lessons or dance or things in your home, they allow up to three students at one time. I'm not sure if that's, if that would be helpful or if we're looking for a larger number than that, but if you do home instruction or dance or music lessons, you can have up to three students at a time in your home.
Any other questions of staff? If the applicant would come forward, state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Christopher Hernandez. My address is 1503 Stapler Avenue.
Does that present a problem for you? Would you ever have an occasion where you would have two kids who are in the same situation that would share an hour or is yours strictly one-on-one?
Up to this point, it's been one-on-one. When I first started at K-State Salina, there was an interest in that and from a teaching standpoint, I saw that where a student was at, while they might both be in calculus, their deficit areas are completely different and it was almost like a waste of their, I mean, while it would be making me more money, it doesn't really help them and that's not what I'm going for. So I've been doing one-on-one and I've actually moved away from, I tried it, I think, one or two other times just to see if the experiment was just that particular individual and I haven't really seen a very high success rate with it, so I've been continuing to keep it one-on-one. What I, when you guys were thinking of the summer enrichment, which I just started, if anything, that would be the only thing because young kids like to play with other kids and they can learn and there's some group games that can be done. That would allow for more potential for different kinds of teaching, which would be different, but I really wouldn't continue, I wouldn't do that with the middle school or high school. And up to this point, I just started the grade school, so it's not something I've seen far enough ahead on.
So does that not take place at your home?
I'm sorry?
Does the enrichment not take place?
No, no, the enrichment does take place in my home. Right now, I only do it one-on-one, but I just started it, so I've been building the program pretty much from scratch and from visiting with a couple of the elementary, I mean, pretty much everything I do, it's first what they need and then after that, I kind of develop a program and now, and really trying to do that now because if I'm looking for their help, they need to be able to come in at any point and be able to drop right in. And so that's what I'm trying to move towards, but as far as the elementary program, it's really too early to say, but I'm, right now, my only plan is to do it one-on-one. I've not moved in another direction and there's been times where we'll go outside to do a game, you know, like a patterns, patterns of numbers catching a ball or something like that, but other than that, that's really what I've been using it for. I know that I've been continuing to be asked that and if I could ever find a way to be successful at it, that would be great, but it hasn't worked yet.
Okay, so you're happy with the student maximum?
I am. It makes it different than a lot of other tutoring experiences, the length of time as well as the one-on-one attention. I think if you're paying that much money for help with your student, you really should be getting that attention that you need because no matter what, you're dividing it up and there might be a similar idea, but they're usually coming at it from different learning approaches and it doesn't seem to be as effective.
Staff would add that you could amend condition number three to read that no more than two students be tutored at any one time with a comma, except for the summer enrichment program for elementary students or with the exception of the summer enrichment program for elementary students.
That would give you the option to explore more students.
Sure, no, I appreciate the opportunity for more growth.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Okay, there being none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Well, I move approval of CU-08-6 with the staff recommendations and the recommended amendment to number three.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve application CU-08-6 with the three conditions and number three being amended to exempt the summer school from the two students at one time. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion's carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is number three, application CU-08-7 filed by Shelley Grandy requesting approval of a conditional use permit to establish and operate a preschool in an unoccupied dwelling located in an R3 multiple-family residential district. The subject property is legally described as Lot 72 on Front Street in the original town of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as 212 South Front Street. Have a staff report.
Thank you, ma'am chairman. John, if you could go to that slide that kind of summarizes our numbers, I think I'll start with that one. Just the, I think it's that one there. Just to give you an idea, you know, it seems like we've had a frequent number of applications here this spring that are related to childcare. Within the city of Salina total, this does not count the Heartland Early Education Program, but within the city of Salina total, there are six preschools and the four of those are located within churches and two of them are in homes and those two that are in homes date back to the late 1960s. So the frequency of cases that come before you for preschools is pretty rare and preschools proposed within dwellings are very rare. It just so happens that we've had two in a row here. The last application was for preschool within an occupied dwelling. This is for preschool within an unoccupied dwelling, but it also might surprise you. It would seem that you've seen that many cases, but we do have group daycare homes that come before you get approval and don't last a lengthy period of time. So the actual number of group daycare homes, that's where you have the up to 12 children and outside assistant is 10. Childcare centers like what they have at the YMCA and over at First Presbyterian Church, there are 11 of those total. And then, which may or may not surprise you, but in what we would call our home occupation category, licensed childcare where the providers do have to take some training on first aid, nutrition, and other things and become certified childcare providers, there are 138 of those scattered around the community. And then registered daycare is generally five children or less and there's no requirements that the provider have training or certifications, but there are 70 of those around. It is primarily those in the top three categories that come before you, the licensed and registered, while they're out there, those are approved administratively by staff and don't get to a public caring level. Back in 2001, city staff was approached by the owner and operator of the Learning Tree Preschool, which was then out at the St. Elizabeth Catholic Church, and they had been asked to vacate the premises by the church and the reason for that was that the county appraiser had been examining situations where if a church was leasing space to what they deemed to be a for-profit operation, then the church was going to be assessed property taxes and lose a portion of their tax-exempt status. So in response to that, some churches were no longer offering or leasing space to preschools. So the applicant or the operator of that preschool approached the planning commission about amending the ordinance to allow preschools to be located in unoccupied dwellings and residential zoning districts on a conditional use basis. And so in addition to our group daycare homes, we have language in there that preschools providing care for no more than 12 children per session may be located in an unoccupied dwelling. And again, we would distinguish a dwelling as a building that is, was designed and built and intended for residential occupancy, which is different than a church or YMCA or other type of building. So in this particular case, the applicant has experience working with Heartland programs, the early education program, has worked as a paraprofessional and also worked with hearing impaired and autistic children. She would like to start up her own preschool operation and she has purchased a vacant one-story home that's next door to her own home and this is on South Front Street. And to find South Front Street, you've got to really go looking for it because it is a one-block section basically off of Walnut Street that extends to the south and there's only homes on one side of the street. Her plan is to continue living at a present home. The preschool would be a standalone use. There wouldn't be anybody residing there and our zoning ordinance as amended requires that a conditional use permit first be reviewed and approved to allow that to occur. I think you're familiar with the way that the preschool operates. They generally operate with morning and afternoon sessions. No session is allowed to last more than three hours and you can't have children in both a morning and an afternoon session. They're limited in that way. We have gone out and done an inspection of this property from the fire and building code perspective. It is looked at differently when a building is no longer occupied as a residence. There are different code implications as it relates to fire and building codes, but for zoning purposes, your role is to look at how will this proposed use impact the neighborhood and nearby properties. So we do have this process. We have the public hearing process and that allows surrounding property owners to be notified and gives them an opportunity to comment on that. The plan would be to have 10 children per session, two sessions per day, morning and afternoon. The preschool would be on the main floor of the home that has a living room, bedroom, and kitchen and dining room and the basement area would not be used. There is a rear yard for outdoor activities and there would be a playset, covered sandbox, and hard-surfaced area for playing ball. Again, we've looked at the size of the lot. It does have 6,000 square feet, which does meet minimum requirements. The rear area is fenced and there's adequate play area for that number of children. Certainly having a, when we consider that there are six preschools currently in the city of Salina, the addition of one, particularly in the Oakdale School area, would be a potential positive for the welfare and convenience of the public. The only potential downside to allowing daycares and preschools in unoccupied dwellings is if you take a neighborhood and take one or several homes and they cease being occupied for a time, it does start to potentially change the character of a particular block. it does start to potentially change the character of a particular block or neighborhood if dwellings are no longer occupied. If you looked at this neighborhood, the homes in this area date back to the turn of the century. The applicant's not planning to change or alter the appearance of the home. She would be allowed to put a sign up on the front entrance to the building. If you've driven by the site, you know that Front Street terminates and does not go through, terminates at the south end. To drive on Front Street, you really have to want to get somewhere. It's not something that you would use to get between other places. There's also vacant land in the river channel on the east side, which means we're only talking about traffic serving one side of the street. Again, we look at the property, and we look at the parking situation. And again, we've noted that the difference between preschool and daycare is that daycare, when you drop off and you pick up, tends to be more staggered or spaced out. And at preschools, since there's a set time, there's a tendency for parents and children to arrive all at one time. So, we've suggested, as we did the last case that you saw in Marymount Road, that perhaps a staggering of schedule for pickup and drop-off might be in order. We're not clear on whether the applicant has any interest or requirement to have an off-site helper. That would be a good thing to know. But we do need to look at the existing and future parking situation in case that that does become an issue. In this particular case, because the applicant lives next door, their vehicles don't need to be accommodated in this driveway. So, we're primarily looking at the driveway for pickup and drop-off. But again, this is not a, it's not a wide driveway, and while there's depth to it, there's not, there's not a lot of width. And so, it would seem that staggering is in order as far as pickups and drop-offs. The other thing, though, is because of the low traffic volumes, having the ability to drop off and pick up at curbside, there shouldn't be a great worry about passing traffic. So, it would not be inappropriate to also have curbside pickup and drop-off in this particular case. Again, just as with every case, you can approve this with what you think are appropriate conditions. If you're not comfortable approving it at this meeting, you can take other appropriate action that you think serves the interest of the public. Our recommendation is if you wish to approve this request, that we do get a confirmation that there's been a final inspection for compliance with life safety code requirements. And as indicated by the health department, I believe, for capacity based on the size of this and the applicant's interest, that no more than 10 children be enrolled in any session. I think with that, I'd be open to any questions that the commission might have.
Thank you Dean. Questions of staff? Okay, there being none, we'll ask for comments by the applicant. So, if the applicant would come forward and state your name and address, please.
My name is Shelley Grandy, my address is 216 South Front. I know one of the comments was in regards to whether or not I was planning on having an assistant, and at this time, I am not. And I am planning on staggering the time, so I don't think that the parking will be an issue.
And how do you stagger the times, by five minutes or 10 minutes or?
Yeah, we'll just talk to the parents and have them drop their kids off early, before class, so.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Are there comments from the public?
Any other questions?
Yes. Could you come up and give your name and address, please? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Hernandez, I live at 1940 Starlight Drive. And the reason why I have a comment is because I have grandchildren, I have a grandson that's in preschool right now, and I know the conditions that he has to deal with. And with staggering the time, does that mean it's going to extend the amount of time that they would have the preschool open? So, in other words, if she's going to start having them drop off earlier, are they going to be, you know, is the day going to be longer than the three hours?
Thank you.
Thank you. Right now, my schedule is a two-and-a-half hour time period, so if I have them, drop them off as early as a half an hour early, I would still not go beyond my three-hour time period.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? There being none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Well, I always have a problem with where I consider a little bit of spot zoning. While it seems it's a good idea, I think the goods are going to outweigh the negatives on this, but I just want to make note the tradition that I don't like to vote to allow any type of business or anything in an unoccupied residential space. I think when they allowed that back in October of 2001, that we probably had a lot more on our mind than that. So, I think they may have just pushed that on through and not really thought about it. The one thing I would want to add if we do approve this is if they are to move from the house next door, that it no longer be allowed to operate as a, as what we're approving today. The requirement be that they must maintain their residence next door to this. I would want them to be allowed to move away and then continue to operate this on Front Street.
So, it would terminate upon a change of ownership or residency at 212?
Right. I mean, we could pre-approve and say if somebody else wanted to buy their house in the business, I know that they would have to come back and be re-approved that way. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with once we approve it, it maintaining that. But whoever owns the house or whoever owns that must live adjacent property.
So, if the ownership of 212 and 216 were severed from each other, then it would term, the right to operate would terminate?
Yes.
What's your thinking there, Aaron? I'm just.
Well, I mean, I'm always negative against any commercialism of residential and any residential of commercialism with. I mean, we have an obligation to the homeowners of the neighborhood, and I just don't want to see our residential districts turning into business districts. And I agree with Dean, I think it's a great thing that they're going to put an end to a limited number of preschools. I think having one in the Oakdale neighborhood would be great. I just don't want to see it become a business once they've moved away. I mean, once they're gone, they come over and show up for work in a residential district, that seems a little bizarre for me. But I think we need to protect, protect the neighborhoods.
And that was why in 2001, our recommendation was that we carve out the limited exception for preschools, but we still have a requirement in place that if you're doing daycare, which is much more common, it has to be in an occupied dwelling, that you cannot go out, purchase a dwelling, and use it exclusively for daycare. And again, that's to address some of the things that Mr. Householder is citing. Because while this was built and designed to serve as a residence, as soon as it ceases to be lived in, there's a couple of things that come into play. One, the county appraiser now will view it as a commercial use, not a residential use. And there are some building and fire code requirements that are different when a dwelling or a building ceases to be occupied for residential purposes. So, there are some things that do come into play that way.
In other words, would it need to be sprinkled? That's.
Because of the size, it may not get to that, but it will be looked at differently. And I know the applicant's been having some discussions with the fire department. But the, it is looked at differently from those two aspects.
I agree that the numbers were pretty staggering, the lack of preschools that we have.
Yeah.
I was kind of shocked, all of the applications, it seems like we've been going through.
Those numbers just really seem very small, but, and I would agree with Mr. Householder's.
I guess I would say that I would second if what he was doing was making a motion there.
No, not yet. I think we better hide it out first. I think, I mean, I just want to be clear, I think it's great what they're doing, and I'm not negative at all towards the preschool. I just want to make sure that we don't allow them to basically open up a business and move away six months from now. I don't think that's your plan. But I just want to be aware that if they do move, that it would cease to exist as a daycare, or I'm sorry, preschool.
Because absent that condition, our approach has been a conditional use permit runs with the land. You're saying it's suitable for that use. And if it is, if you view this differently because the applicant lives next door, then that would be an appropriate condition.
And just a technical question, it still maintains its, does it change the zoning limit? It still maintains an.
It'll be, so if someone were to come and purchase it later, it would still be zoned residential. What is different, it's based on our understanding, is everybody gets their property tax bill, and if you live in a residence, you're going to get a little code that says, "Are you residential use?" But in this particular case, if it's not occupied, then they're going to reclassify it as CU, commercial use, because there's no resident occupant.
On there, okay.
Are there any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve this application, CU 08-7, along with the staff recommendations and Mr. Householder's recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to approve application CU 08-7 with the two staff recommendations. And the third, from the commission, that ownership of the house next door runs with ownership of the preschool.
Or use of, yeah, I guess so.
Use of the preschool. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is application Z 07-23 filed by the Salinas City Commission requesting amendment of Article 10. Signs by amending sections 42-503, 42-504, 42-506, 42-507, and sections 42-516 through 42-524, relating to the installation of billboards and digital electronic display signs. Continued discussion of LED signs from the April 1st meeting.
Commissioner Soderberg is not present, but we'll move forward with this anyway. And we've had the various discussions, and from staff's point of view, we were more concerned about billboards. But maybe some members of the commission wanted to focus on the signage first. And I think maybe we can get some guidance from Mr. Miccel in this direction. But one of the challenges that communities are having is that the traditional time and temperature sign, or even the sign like you see, that current technology, the Bicentennial Center has, is different than the true video display or digital display technology, both as to the quality of the image and brightness. And so, if we are to commence with drafting any proposals and to have a definitional distinction between time and temperature type signs, I guess one that comes to mind, there was an insurance agency that went into a dwelling at Highland and Cloud. And it was actually zoned C1, even though it was a dwelling. And because it was C1, they wouldn't, from our perspective, be able to have this type of, the digital display, but they are allowed to have the time and temperature type sign. But to distinguish the two, you really need to define one, which I think we call Electronic Message Center today, and whatever we want to call the newer type signs, like you have at Speedy Cash and Dairy Queen and the Sunshine Ford on Ohio Street. So, to start with, and I don't know if you have that slide, John, or the issues and options. But what, from a terminology standpoint, I guess again, we're trying to rely on Mr. Miccel's expertise, and also what people think would be understandable by commissioners and those in the public. What do we think is the best terminology to describe those types of, if we're going to have specific rules for those types of signs, we need to define what the best term is for that. And we have seen, and there's probably more terms than this, we have seen video display signs. I've probably most commonly seen digital display signs, but they're also commonly referred to as LED signs. Although to us, there are some types of LED signs that you could have that wouldn't be this type of video display board. But I guess I'd want to hear your thoughts on that.
Right now, probably the most common term that the industry is using, and they've been kind of playing it out a little bit, is Electronic Message Center.
Okay.
That's the EMC, it's called, is probably the most widely used acronym for a digital sign.
And does that apply to the time and temp type as well?
Not really, and even time and temps are changing. They are using the same type of technology, but in a much smaller scale. For example, Mid-Kansas Outdoor Power, we just put up a time/temperature there. It's a very compact unit, it's controlled with a little hand controller, it's got a really small ECM in there, uses LED. My gosh, it's like one or two amp service for the thing.
Right, yeah, they don't use much power at all.
Not at all. And LED signs, Dean's exactly right in that, there's so many things that LEDs are doing now. Right now, there, you can purchase conversion kits to convert an old sign that used fluorescent lamps over to an LED. There's LEDs and there's refractors in there that do the same job with a lot less power, a lot less, a lot more longevity.
Sure.
So, LED signs, I think, would be out. Digital displays is kind of a, maybe a little bit of an old type of a term. I really think Electronic Message Center and is more accurate. Video display signs also would probably, when I think of video displays, or what the industry calls video displays, is more like the play-by-play stuff that you get at stadiums. It's more video versus signage.
Dean, we're looking more for a definition between what we consider the Speedy Cash sign and a time and temp sign. We're looking, because I mean, just for a definition, couldn't we simply call time and temp signs text-only signs? Or LED text, or, I hate to throw the word LED because they're still not all going to be updated, but couldn't we say text-only moving, text-only signs, or something along those lines? Or we specify it's a non-graphic, it's merely letters and numbers?
That might be one approach to do that. I think everybody, like I said, we currently allow time and temperature type signs in the downtown C4 area. But we've heard from the commission and others that the Speedy Cash type sign would probably not be appropriate in the C4 areas. So, in order to do that, we need to have one term or terminology for the Speedy Cash type sign, and one terminology for, you know, we, we're, and we need to improve all the way around. But it says, "A sign where on the current time and temperatures indicated is permitted in all districts except residential districts." And we kind of, we say, "Computer-operated electronic message signs are permitted in all districts except residential C1 and C2." So, to a point, we address that, but we don't, we don't really have what I think are good definitions to distinguish the two.
Yeah, I think message might allow some misleading, a message could be, I think, maybe for our video-image type use, that phrase that you say that the industry is using, for text-only, they say, "Text-only electronic billboards."
Well, but I got to preface that just a little bit, that the, used to, could buy a text-only type sign. Now, you can't buy a text-only sign. I take that back, there are some really, really low-end signs that you can buy that are text-only. But pretty much anything that has text right now, like for example, at the Bicentennial. for example, at the Bicentennial Center, that's primarily a, a text-type display, mainly because of its size. It has, the aspect ratio is very short and very long, but still, it has the ability to roll, I think one of the patterns that you see there is falling leaves in the fall. That's, that's.
It has some graphic images.
Yeah. And even though it's a monochrome display, it can still do shading. So things that would, would identify, I think, an Electronic Message Center would be that, well, let's, let's back that up a little bit. I think for, for our purposes, probably the, the most important thing, that is that a time/temperature display be only able to do time.
Exactly. Text-only.
Anything else is an Electronic Message Center, virtually.
I would agree with that.
And, and there are even upgrades for older type systems to where they can run very, you know, primitive type motion graphics now. So, so I think that, that if you make that distinction where, where, where a time/temperature is only able to do that, and call everything else an ECM, an EMC would be probably a little better.
And again, the idea being that even if they could produce more graphics, that they are, so to speak, dumbed down in the areas where only time and temperature are currently allowed, I think is kind of what we're getting at. So even if the technology could do the graphics, if we're going to allow time and temperature, they're limited to only put time and temperature. Who's going to be the sun police? I saw graphics over there on Ninth and Cloud.
And maybe, should maybe a second question relates back to that distinction, but one of the questions, it's, I think, I think we understand about blinking and flashing. I think the, the other question about displaying animation, moving images, I mean, our own Bicentennial sign has to a degree some, it's primitive animation. I would interpret the Sunshine Ford sign to have some animation to it. I, I think we can address the, you know, the blinking and flashing might go with, you know, backing the strobe lights or chaser lights or those types of, of things. The Stiefel Theater sign downtown does have some blinking and flashing, but it was, it's actually specifically grandfathered in under our sign code as a blinking, flashing sign.
And the old chasers, I mean, those are very appropriate, I think, for the, for the downtown or the little district. And those were, those were signs that were done back then. That was the digital sign of the 30s.
Well, and even, even, even moving, moving neon, I don't know that we have any in Salina, but you've seen it where like sections of neon light up at different times to make it appear like an arrow is going. You know, I would sure hate to do away with some of that. And so that's just good classic advertising.
Okay. The, I would think our expectation is if you were limited to a time and temperature sign, that that would not have animation or anything else to it. It would be the text-only. I think this one is, is maybe the easiest, except for measuring it, of how bright, how bright is, is too bright.
Could, could we go back just?
Sure.
Just one second. One other thing that right now is a very hot topic, and, and I don't know if the zoning would ever put this in a place where time and temperature was allowed and other stuff wasn't, but price changer signs for gas stations. Digital price-changing signs are, are a big deal right now. It's basically the same technology as what a time/temperature is. It's a programmable thing, and frankly, these stations are buying them because if they can't send somebody out to, to change gas prices, they are losing money, you know, if they're not keeping up with the, with the market. So those are very hot, hot properties right now. And I think you will see those continue to grow, especially on, you know, some little neighborhood stores. They're getting to be very.
Price during the day.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
You can even raise the price during the same day.
Oh, exactly.
Oh, they do.
Multiple times.
Yeah.
Multiple times.
It's a good point, though.
So that, I, I just wanted you guys to be aware that that's something that's probably going to be coming up more often. But it.
It would be appropriate to limit those to a text-only. So you could have a time and temperature and a price change sign, the limiting to text-only.
Sure.
I think we've had a lot of discussion about the, the automatic dimmer controls and also light sensors that should, if programmed properly, they should dial down the illumination or brightness after dusk. Sometimes works, sometimes doesn't. Wichita adopted some brightness standards, but they had to go out and purchase a special piece of equipment, you know, to measure that. If we, so, you know, there's two approaches that we can take. Is one is that, you know, review of signs that would go up, we can require that the installer give us information about the, the dimmer control system. The other approach is to say, you know what, we noticed, we've gotten a lot of complaints about your signs, and it's too bright. But in order to do that, we will need some objective standard, and then we'll also need a, just like you have to have a, you know, something to measure sound, you've got to have something to measure light if you're going to have a, a standard. So.
Sound, I, I noticed that when I was reading through there. Most of the digital signs that we installed, other than fans, have no sound whatsoever. What, in specific, were you?
Well, I'm just saying that the different communities take different approaches in terms of, some communities, you know, disturbing the peace ordinance, or others will put a decibel limit in, or that, well, in, in order to, if you enforce a decibel limit, you got to have a decibel.
Meter.
Meter. And somebody who, who can use it. And I'm saying, if, if you had some objective standard that says that if a sign has this much illumination, it's too bright, then you'd have to, we'd have to purchase something that, where we could do a measurement.
I think that would make more sense than leaving it up to the general public, because there might be one little old person like me that's annoyed by a sign and calls every day, "That sign's too bright." So I think we probably should put in some sort of standard. What did Wichita say? Did they have a?
It was a maximum, and it was measured at the property line of where the sign was, and it was how much light it could project at the edge of the property.
That makes sense.
I think for enforcement purposes, you're going to need that at some point anyway. Because the signs we sell have automatic dimmers. You can override those, and you can also set the brightness at, at what level it dims at. So the operator is ultimately responsible for the thing. And, and there are some that, well, like the one I took up in Lincoln that time, I think I showed you guys pictures of it. That one was offensively bright, you know, and, and I certainly don't condone that. But, but I think that the only way that we accurately judge whether a sign is too bright is, is by having some sort of a meter. And the other thing I was going to say is in the permit process for, for new signs, certainly a cut sheet that had, you know, information on the type of dimming, and, and also the software, if, if it's usable, I mean, programmable in that respect, I think that kind of language would be necessary in the permit process.
Had we discussed maybe taxing the signs to pay, I don't, I don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting more tax. Maybe that was the wrong word. That somehow in the signing process, a fee, almost like we do the neighborhood parks for new developments, we take a certain amount of money and pay for public parks. Had we talked about doing that on a sign that maybe they, in the end, through their applying for a new sign, part of their fee goes to paying for the salinometer, or whatever this thing is?
I mean, we are in the process, and we'll probably be discussing it at your next meeting, just a whole comprehensive review of our, all of our various application fees and, you know, permit fees, and we'll be discussing. And I don't know if we want to differentiate between the two, but clearly, I mean, our, our departments are funded by the general fund. We don't try to set our fees or permits so that we pay for ourselves. We, we don't, we don't do that. But certainly, by looking at that, you could, you could allocate a certain part of that. And that, we've not gone out and priced anything or compared what Wichita's done, but it will. We have a, a equipment that we purchased that allows us to measure the height of signs. It does not tell us anything about brightness. That would be a separate thing.
Do we know how much they cost, though, or is it?
Don't have a real good handle on, on what Wichita has done.
Well, if it's cheap, I'll buy it, and we can move on.
But I, I think it's probably correct that if we ever get into the brightnesses in the eye of the beholder, you're going to have to have some of a new standard and say, "I'm sorry, we've been outmeasured this, and it complies."
Mm-hmm.
That gets us to the question of, of electronic billboards, which are the digital Electronic Message Center signs, but on a large, larger scale. We do not have one yet. That is usually what, we've had the smaller signs, it's usually the billboards that, that get people's attention. But if you do allow them, and we took note of the fact that in Salina, we have billboards in interstate locations. We also have billboards in town on Ohio and Crawford and, and streets like that. So one approach could be say, "Yeah, they're allowed, but only on interstate, not within, on arterial streets," or they're, they're allowed altogether. There's, like I said, a number of different approaches there. The, the one that seems to be most common is the, which I'll call the Lincoln, Nebraska model, is, "Well, take, take two of your old non-conforming billboards down, and we'll let you put a new electronic one up." That, that has been adopted by a number of communities, but that, you know, one of the things we need to do is we need to get an inventory of ours and figure out which ones are conforming and which ones are not. So that, that would be a necessary thing. Is there any thought about the, the true Electronic Message Center billboard, and whether that should be interstate-only or any billboard?
My, my opinion is it should be interstate-only. I think they could get pretty intrusive if there were too many of them in town.
I, I think that the other thing that might drive that kind of thinking is, is right, well, I, I just priced an electronic billboard the other day, a 10-foot by 20-foot. I priced one two years ago, and it was $100,000 cheaper this month than it was two years ago.
So they're coming down?
Exactly. And, and that will drive the replacement cost. And frankly, there is not a strong billboard industry in Salina here. The, compared to some other cities, you know, obviously with more population and more, I mean, more people to buy advertising, that, that drives that market. We don't have a real strong market. Most of the ones that have been up there, have been up there for quite a while, and.
And since I've worked here, I've reviewed two new billboards.
Is that right?
During that period of time. I mean, the rest have just been replacing the, you know, the faces on existing billboards. But I'm only aware of, within the city limits, two billboards that have gone up.
What about, you, you talked about limiting, limiting them to interstate-only, and would that be even in the city limits? Is that?
Correct, yeah.
The, the state classifies the city limits as, or their jurisdiction for highway billboards is three miles outside of the city limits. Is that correct?
Well, they would have jurisdiction up and down the interstate in Saline County as well with their process.
Yeah, I should, I didn't say that right. They, they take a backseat, so to speak. They, they allow, if it's within, I, I believe the number's three miles, if it's within three miles of the city.
They let us be more restrictive than, than they are. Yeah. They will, they will allow, in other words, they have their own guidelines and a permit process, but cities can always be more restrictive than KDOT.
I have no problem with any of the billboards being switched. The two-for-one seems like a good idea, that's fine. But I think if we have the other restrictions in place, I personally wouldn't have a problem with any billboard being changed to electronic, because as I've said before, I think it's the way the technology's going. It's going to be cheaper than a regular billboard eventually. I know that we're looking at maybe getting rid of some of the billboards that were in town anyway, so that may limit the limit that we're in the city. But I personally wouldn't have a problem with like the old billboard that was there at, by the old broom factory or whatever. I don't know, I think we're trying to get rid of those anyway. But that as an example. If it met all our criteria and wasn't flashing, and was more like the signs like there's one in Wichita, where just, you can't tell if you're looking at LED, and then all of a sudden it changes, and you think it's just a regular sign. I'm okay with that kind of signage changing. I, I sure wouldn't want a 20-foot by 10-foot Speedy Cash going on. But I think if, if it meets all the restrictions, I, I personally haven't a problem with all the billboards being replaced with electronic ones.
Even the ones that couldn't go up today.
I guess I'm a fool in that.
Well, I, I'm not, we got to track them, but we have a few on Ohio Street.
Oh, like the police advertisement?
Yeah. If, if they came in today and wanted to put a billboard there, they wouldn't be able to do it. And what prompted that in several communities is, is the, the non-conforming or what should be grandfathered-away billboard being converted to electronic. And some of those tend to be closer to residential neighborhoods at.
No, I, I wouldn't support those. I, I think our thinking is that we want to get rid of those anyway, don't we?
Gradually, over time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think as those, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to support that. But I think those should go away. I mean, when the town was, you know, a mile on the other side, it made sense. From now that they're in the heart of town, it doesn't make sense that those even stay anyway, but.
I think we did have discussions about the EMC-type signs in the core C4 district as, as we currently don't allow them. And, and there's discussion about making that larger or corresponding to the lead district. And I think we focused back again in the core C4 district that the Speedy Cash type sign would not be permitted in C4.
Well, back on non-conforming billboards, can't, can't we just put a time limit out there? I mean, we'll never get out of this unless we stop it at some point.
Well, the, and we'll, we'll see what, what comes to pass, but the, the billboard that Aaron was referring to over Ash and in front.
Isn't there.
Uh, isn't there anymore, because the windstorm that came through there pushed it out into Ash Street, and now it's, now it's gone. Well, if you have a non-conforming billboard, and it disappears because of a windstorm, it can't go back. And so when we say gradually eliminated over time.
Wednesday.
That's one method by which billboards are eliminated. And once, once it's gone, then the grandfathering is, is gone.
And going back to billboards, so what we're talking about in, in the language of this, when we're talking about billboards, we are talking about off?
Off-premise signs, and probably above a certain size. I think we'd probably define it that way. Our ordinance uses the term off-premise advertising sign as opposed to billboard. But billboard's what most people commonly understand. But those are signs that are located on one piece of property that are advertising some, another location.
Let, let me throw a scenario by you. At one of our previous meetings, I think last year or something, we approved a, an Old Navy sign. It was an off-premise sign. It was actually in a lot next to one where the central mall's located, to advertise Old Navy. Scenario, the mall owners want to get together and, and purchase a, an attractive sign structure and a digital video display that shows what's happening at the mall. Sales, promotions inside, sidewalk sales, those type of things. Where that wouldn't, under this current language, if something like that was proposed, we wouldn't be able to, to do that because it wouldn't be located on the highway. Is that correct?
Well, the, what we would have to do is, is have a definition of, of billboard, and then it would probably be based on, on size. But the, the same commission here approved an off, off-premise sign essentially for McColl's Project. It's, there's no other tenant there, but the same thing was approved for, at the Lowe's site as well, that, that the, the signs that are located there are actually on Lowe's lot, but they could be advertising other, in the future, other tenants that aren't located on those lots. Those are off-premise signs, but in our thinking. other tenants that aren't located on those lots. Those are off-premise signs, but in our thinking, don't amount to billboards. So it's going to be, it's gonna be incumbent on us to define a distinction between a sign that just happens to be on a different premises from a billboard.
You see my point though, say that they wanted to put up a 100-square-foot sign, double-faced, we'll call it a small billboard for lack of that, and it was a multi-tenant type thing, which would be off-premise, say, let's use that Central Mall example again. How would you look at that? In other words, so do you call size a factor for being a billboard or not a billboard?
I think so. And also deals with whether it's advertising products that are available on the premises. If you have a sign on I-135 in Salina that advertises the Wichita Airport, that is, that's a billboard. I mean, a sign at Central Mall that tells you about sidewalk sales and what's going on at their stores, that's not a billboard because it's telling you about products and services and events on the premises.
What if it tells you about the Santa Fe days or Smoky Hill River Festival?
It starts getting into a...
Drinking booze at the Stiefel Theater.
Yes, and it becomes a community service thing like you described, some hospitals and things have.
Well, a community theater, if you have sponsorship from Phillips or something, so it starts putting Phillips on its sign.
It's complicated.
I don't think anybody's gonna call foul on that.
I wouldn't consider anything like that to be a billboard. We'll just have to, I think, to come up with a, we could define... Ruptural type definition.
I guess what I would like to see is, I don't have any problem with language that would define an out-and-out billboard of, say, X amount of square feet, say that's 200 square feet or whatever it happens to be, being adjacent to interstates only. I would also like to see us include, or not exclude, a conditional use type situation for one. You know, like say, if Central Mall, or let's say, things get developed more on South Ohio, a group of businesses in there that wanted to advertise in some electronic fashion to benefit all of them. I'd hate to see us exclude something like that and also possibly exclude, you know, the Starbucks thing. I keep going on.
Well, I mean...
What's that mean?
I said, we went from, at Midstate Plaza, we went from having thirteen, fourteen different pole signs to concentrating those onto a large pylon sign. We would certainly encourage that and want to encourage that. But that is not a billboard. It's a large pylon sign that's telling you about the tenants and the products and services that are available at Midstate.
And my point exactly, at some point, you know, they dressed that place up and they've made that place very attractive from what it was. And at some point in the future, there may be another facelift that goes on with the tenants getting together and saying, "Hey, we want to put a digital video display out there and here's what we want it to look like." I guess I'd hate to see us just totally exclude that without being able to have the possibility through a conditional use permit of bringing that in.
I would say that that would, the intention would be that would be permitted. To certain brightness and illumination standards, but that would be permitted sign.
Yeah, I think we could define that any shopping center not really be considered off-site advertising. And I think more what Dean is saying is more off-site when you advertise in Wichita Airport at the, at our interstate. I think a sign that advertises any business that falls within a group of business that maintains that sign is legitimate advertising, I would think. But at least it is in my book.
Yeah, I think that will be incumbent on us to distinguish that. But it's not, the questions about billboards and arterial streets, that doesn't really have anything to do with Midstate or Central Mall or any of those types of settings. It's the ones that advertise things that are unrelated and are sitting on a site and have nothing to do with the business that's actually there. And I don't, the one on South Ohio that comes to mind, I don't know if that's the small daylight donut or the liquor store or whatever, but it advertises things that don't have anything to do with that location. So that would be a true billboard.
And somebody pays for that advertising. Is there a distinction there that we can make?
Well, generally, somebody has a piece of property, they're gonna lease that to a sign company to install a billboard. And then the billboard company leases space on that billboard to different entities to convey that. So to me, it still gets back to advertising things that aren't related to the site where the sign is located. And I think we can make that distinction. And that, we've talked about C4, but then we also need to think about our traditional churches, schools, nursing homes, things like that, that we allow on a conditional basis in residential zoning districts. And should they be allowed to have electronic message center signs? Or should it be a case-by-case basis? Or do you write it in a way that if a church wants to get rid of their bulletin board sign and have an electronic message center sign, is that okay?
We are getting a lot of requests from churches. Let's put it that way.
Sunday, Sunday, Sunday. Be there. Tickets are only seven dollars, but you only need the first half.
Well, and the same goes for schools. Schools have events, schools have calendars, schools have things going on and that.
The state of Kansas is putting up four digital signs along the highway.
Are they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And really, except for the fact that the churches and schools tend to be more in residential setting than, say, Kansas Wesleyan or K-State Salina, I think the same thing. Our current sign limitations for our university zoning district are fairly restrictive, but that would be the same while we're visiting the subject. How about electronic message center signs for the campuses? And again, they, like churches and schools, they have special events, they have calendar of events, they have things that they are wanting to bring to the attention of the public. But when you go beyond commercial zoning and say, well, you know, some extent into residential, because we have some churches that are on arterial streets and we have some churches that are on residential streets. And same with schools.
Do you think that that could be a function of the lot frontage or building size like what you do now with signs?
It could be a function, I mean, one approach is to look at whether it's on an arterial street or not. Having a sign on Ohio for a church or school might be different than having one on Neal Avenue for a church or school, you know, in terms of the electronic message center. And that's one possible approach.
I would like to go back to Mr. Householder's comment about trying to protect the secrecy of residential zoning. And I think this is a good place to stop it as far as I'm concerned. I think that there has to be a limitation someplace along the line. I think it pertains to the same thing you were saying, protection of residential zoning. And I think this would be a good place to apply it.
Yeah, I don't think that's inappropriate at all. I think within a certain distance, like, let's use your Ohio example. You know, probably proximity to a residential zone there is pretty far away. Neal Avenue, much different. You know, and kind of come up with some kind of number, X amount of feet away is...
We've had some discussions with parent-teacher organizations, the schools about, you know, the electronic message center type sign at, you know, your neighborhood elementary school. And that's going across a line that's a little different, we think, than, you know, a commercial area. But nonetheless, the interest is there.
Well, can timing of it be a factor in those areas?
Can be. We actually have some things that we've had limited success enforcing that actually unilluminated signs requires them to be switched off at 10:00 PM or something along those lines. You know, that is a possibility.
Maybe in those particular districts. I'm a little more, although Les is right, I do tend to err on the side of residents. Schools and, maybe not so much churches, but definitely schools, I still would support some billboard. Again, we may have to have a different light level for those particular, but I still think those are really important places for electronic billboards. They've got a lot of events coming and going. Maybe we would just have to put that time restriction on there. I would also probably want to say that anything that had to do with, not that churches are selling anything, but schools or nursing homes, or maybe nursing homes, that they be allowed to only post events and not any form of sales, so to speak. Like if a college wanted to put up a billboard, it'd be allowed to say, "Hey, football game is Friday night," but not, "Enrollment starts next week. You know, enrollment at Kansas Wesleyan's, $1,300" or something like that. It'd be pretty expensive, would it? You know, maybe limit, maybe that's getting too crazy, but I just, I think if we're going to allow, you know, keep it to information-based and that way we kind of get around it where...
So nonprofits.
You know, we're in business too.
I know.
So not-for-profits.
Sure. Well, yeah, the messages on schools, churches and nursing homes and maybe the colleges be limited to event-only information. You know, you can say enrollment starts eight AM Sunday, but not enrollment starts, "Special deal in hand now. Get five dollars off or something."
Policing content is, that's another, probably not a lot of people.
Yeah, that's what I went into. Hours or brightness.
So the more we talk, the more intricate it gets.
I think you start to run afoul if you allow somebody to post a sign and have electronic messages and then try to limit them. But the only distinction that's really been defended well in court is the distinction between off-premise and on-premise advertising. In other words, if K-State Salina put up an electronic message sign and then ran advertisements for Quick Shop on it, that would probably be inappropriate. And that could be regulated. But I don't, I don't, anything that relates to the activities, the business of the campus, I don't think you want to get into regulating content.
Would the electronic signs be allowed to be the same total signage that other signs are allowed to be, for example?
Well, you would take your choice. You'd take down your reader board or your conventional sign and you'd replace it. But you, we, our allowance of square footage for signage for properties and businesses is very generous already. And these would have to fit within those parameters. We're not looking at expanding more sign area to accommodate electronic message center signs. And they'd be substituting for what is already allowed.
I think Margaret's got a good point there. And I hate to shoot myself in the foot, but you can get a lot more information on an EMC than you can on a fixed sign. And I would think it might not be out of line to say, an electronic message center counts for one and a half times your signage. So in other words, if you were allowed 60 square feet, say, and your message center was four by eight, which would be 32, you would be actually making that count for 48 square feet, giving you a balance of 12 square feet.
I can see that to a minimum of some size. Wouldn't want the guy's got a four-foot sign only being able to have a TV screen on there.
You gotta still read it.
What is that?
But my point is, I mean, I think it's a valid point that you do get a lot of bang for the buck with an EMC and that...
Almost kind of a trade-off, trade-out.
And, you know, again, with the cost coming down, used to be, they were limiting in terms of dollars. I mean, you know, frankly, there's a lot of them that were very expensive for bigger displays. And those are coming down in price. So that's making that, you know, seem like a lot better value for the money.
Kind of like when I bought my first calculator for a hundred dollars and a year later, they were 48.
Yeah. Five years later, they were four dollars. They're giving them away.
Well, I think that's primarily what, before we started getting into drafting mode or proposals or anything like that, I guess the sense, the sense I'm getting is that the group's not completely sold on opening up residential zoning districts for those signs. But, I mean, it is possible that you could have, say, an R3 zone lot on Ohio Street or Crawford like that that might be occupied by a church and maybe that could be considered. But if you took that same church and moved it over to Lewis Street or something, it might not be appropriate. So I think that's one way to look at it. And even now, a church or school that's on arterial street has a little bit more liberal sign allowance than one that's on a residential street. So we could look at it that way. But that, we really didn't, we just kind of wanted to walk through those. And I think, you know, our main thing was, well, we know what the old technology was and what you call it and define it. But we wanted to distinguish the, what's called the traditional old-style time and temperature graphic type thing from the newer display. And we want to have the right terminology. You know, just like we've emphasized the difference between a massage parlor and massage therapy. And then you want to be able to do the same thing with these type of signs. So same thing applies. I can afford a time and temp sign. I can't afford a big LED sign. Same thing.
I can afford parlor.
We will keep working on that. And as far as our other matters, we will have a, we will have a regular scheduled meeting on the first of July. We may bring something back in this regard, but we do want to send some information out to you about, the last time we did a comprehensive review of our planning-related fees, applications for zoning conditionals was 1994. And that's probably a little bit overdue. But what we'd like to do is give you some historical comparisons, how we've done that. And then we've surveyed other communities and what they would charge for comparable types of applications. We have different types of projects and applications that, you know, they are, application fees are, because the time and detail and things involved are greater for some types than they are for others. And so there ought to be a sliding scale for, you know, for more complex projects or ones that are 100 acres versus one that's an individual lot, that type of thing. But we want to just get some information out to you so you can see how things have been historically here and then how we compare with other communities and what the appropriate fees should be for different types of applications.
Does the planning department have anything to do with the licensure?
We don't, no. The fees that are within our purview primarily involve applications that go to Heritage Commission, Downtown Design Review Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission. And a few that are administrative, but we don't really have anything, you know, on the licensing. It all ends up with the city commission. But anything that relates to applications that you see and review, we would like to get your thoughts on appropriate fees and application costs. And so we'll be preparing something for you on that. And we've got, also got items filed already for the 15th of July. So I think we'll continue to be meeting on our two-week intervals.
Could you also let us know, some of the places that we get permits from have a permit requ- Could, could you also let us know, some of the places that we get permits from have a permit request charge and then a, the actual permit fee. And I believe the state is that way as well. In other words, the permit application's one charge and, and they do that in the event that it gets turned down or is not approved for whatever reason. They, they still have administrative costs in, in going through the motions of checking it out. Do we?
We get all of our fees upfront and we try to calculate them so they cover our out-of-pocket costs. And if somebody comes to, you know, we, we are very upfront with people and say, you know, as a staff, you have a right to file this application. We as a staff will probably not recommend in favor of this. And they understand that they pay their fee and file the application, that if they don't get their desired result, they don't get a refund. You know, it's not, but there are cases where it's not directly related to planning. Happens occasionally with, with permits and with other things where staff will spend a lot of time reviewing something and then it, nothing happens with it. And there's a lot of time that's devoted to that that could be devoted to other.
Sure.
Projects. And we don't recoup that cost. But, you know, we, I think Mr. Appleby's familiar with this, but certainly you submit a set of plans to build a building. You don't pay a fee when you submit the plans to pay us to review them. When the permit is ready to pick up and be issued, that's when the, when the fee is collected. And so that is the opposite of what we do in planning, which is the fee is paid upfront when you file your application. And we have mailing costs and publication costs and things like that, so we collect the fee upfront to cover those costs. And whether, we don't, we can't predict how the boards or commissions are going to vote on it. So you, your, your fee's not based on the outcome, it's based on the direct costs involved in, in processing that, so. But we'll, we'll try to address that. And we've had some people comment that when they're at conferences, other people chuckle at how little we charge for a sign permit. So we'll, we'll be looking at that too, so.
Very reasonable.
And you can, you can put up four or five signs under the same permit too, so that, that's a deal.
Are we going to be looking at the wind stuff again soon? Have you guys began to look at those definitions?
We are, and I think we may, we may prepare a little commission information thing for the city commission just so they can get some of the same information you had and give us a chance, a chance to give their feedback as well. I think the only other thing that we would have is we, we want to bring something back. They're both kind of technical cleanup items. One deals with our, we have an administrative process for lot splits, but it's, it's tied into building permits and our, our process and language isn't very clear on that. If somebody wants to sell off a piece of ground to their neighbor, they don't have to get our approval. But the way our ordinance is written, it kind of reads that way. It's, it's only if you're doing that in order to create a lot for a building permit. So we want to clarify that. And then we use the term certificate of occupancy in both building and zoning settings. And we want to change that terminology to certificate of zoning compliance and get away from the certificate of occupancy. Because you can't really occupy a sign. So we think certificate of zoning compliance is more appropriate. And so those are some cleanup items that we'll be bringing to you. That's all we have for you this evening.
Meeting's adjourned.